I would like to call this village board meeting of Thursday, April 18, 2024, to our direction. Director Schmitt, please take the role.
Mayor Coker.
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt.
Here.
Trustee Siddiqui.
Here.
Trustee Light.
Here.
Trustee Meritato.
Here.
Trustee Pochek.
Here.
Trustee Schroeder.
Please stand and join me in saying the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on our side, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will continue with a public hearing by the mayor and board of trustee for the purpose of receiving oral and written comments from public concerning the annual appropriation ordinance for the fiscal year beginning May 1st, 2024 and ending April 30th, 2025. Anybody from public, any question? Okay.
We need a motion to close the hearing.
Okay, we, uh, motion to close public hearing. Uh, trustee Schmidt.
I move that we close the public hearing.
Uh, trustee Light.
Second.
Uh, Director Schmitt.
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui.
Yes.
Trustee Light.
Yes.
Trustee Meritato.
Yes.
Trustee Pochek.
Yes.
This public hearing is closed. We now move on, uh, petition and community, uh, communications. Trustee Schmidt, please.
The village of Glendale Heights has started resurfacing West Fullerton Avenue from Schnell Road to Bloomingdale Road. This work will include roadway resurfacing, sidewalk and curb improvements, storm sewer repairs, and pavement marking replacement. This project is anticipated to be completed in late June, and there may be parking restrictions during this timeframe. The general contractor for this project is K-5 Construction Company with oversight by Christopher B. Burke Engineering Limited. If you have any questions, please contact the project engineer, Andrew Bark, at 224-500-0019. Arbor Day is a nationally celebrated observance that encourages tree planting and care. Founded by J. Sterling Morton in 1872, it is celebrated each year on the last Friday in April to coincide with the best tree planting times. This year, Illinois observes Arbor Day on Friday, April 26th. The village will be working with various community groups to plant new trees throughout the community in honor of Arbor Day. If you have any questions regarding tree planting and care, please call 630-260-6060. Thank you.
Uh, trustee Siddiqui.
Stop by Sports Hub on the first and third Thursdays of each month for the Glendale Heights seasonal market. Shop for food, produce, crafts, and more from locally sourced vendors. The market runs from 11:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. If you would like to be a vendor or for more information, please contact Tanya McCoe at Do you have unwanted or old cell phones, retired U.S. flags, bikes, batteries, and other recyclables? Drop them off at One Stop Reuse and Recycling Depot on Saturday, April 27th, from 10:00 a.m. to noon. All items can be dropped off at the GH2O Aquatic Center Parking Lot located at 240 Civic Center Plaza. Document shredding will be available at the event with a limit of four boxes per vehicle. Additionally, electronic recycling will also be accepted for an additional fee. For more information or a complete list of accepted items, visit www.glandalehighs.org or call 630-260-6000.
Thank you. Thank you. Spring yard waste curbside collections are made on your regular or holiday scheduled pickup day by Republic Service. All yard waste must be placed in either biodegradable paper bags or in cans clearly labeled "Yard Waste Only." Biodegradable paper bags or cans must not exceed 32 gallons in size and 50 pounds in weight. Brush must be in bundles not exceeding four feet in length, two feet in diameter, and 50 pounds in weight. Please remember that all single-family and multifamily residential units required to utilize Republic Services for collection and disposal of refuse. When placing your refuse and recycling toads curbs out for collection, containers are to be placed at curbside immediately adjacent to the street without interfering or endangering the movement of vehicles. Please do not overfill your garbage or recycling bins. If you have any questions about yard waste pickup, please contact Republic Service at Thank you.
Uh, Director Schmitt, please.
Join the Village of Glendale Heights team. We are now hiring for a variety of seasonal, part-time, and full-time positions in various departments throughout the village. Stop by the Sports Hub on Sunday, April 28th, from 2:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m. for the summer job fair. Gain valuable experience and make friends that will last a lifetime working for the Village of Glendale Heights. For more information, please visit www.glandalehighs.org.
Your seat back.
Summer is just around the corner, and the GH2O Aquatic Center will be opening Memorial Day weekend May 25th. Purchase your pool pass starting May 1st through the end of May for discounted rates. Benefits to become, benefits to becoming a ma, made a member includes priority entrance at 11:30 a.m. and discounts on swim lessons, swim team registrations, pool rentals, and more. For more information, contact the Sports Hub at 630-260-6060. The next coffee and chat with the village president and board will be Saturday, May 4th, at the Linda Jackson Center for Senior Citizens from 10:00 a.m. to noon. If you are unable to attend and have any comments, suggestions, or questions for the village president or village board, please contact the village president's office anytime at 630-909-5302 or contact your district trustee. Thank you.
Uh, trustee Pochek.
During the months of April and May, parking restrictions will be in effect from 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. due to street sweeping. Color-coded no parking signs are posted in four different zones throughout the village. Street parking is not allowed on Monday for the red zone, Tuesday for the blue zone, Wednesday for the green zone, and Friday for the brown zone. To find out your zone, visit the village website. For any questions on the street sweeping program, please contact Public Works at 630-260-6040.
Number two, a proclamation to proclaim the week of April 21st to 27th, 2024 as National Volunteer Week. Number three, a proclamation to proclaim April 22nd, 2024 as Earth Day. Number four, a proclamation to proclaim April 26th, 2024 as Arbor Day. Number five, a proclamation to proclaim May 1st, 2024 as Global Love Day. If there are no objections, I will sign these proclamations. I have already signed them. Number six, Arbor Day Tree City Presentation Key.
I'm over here. I moved, I moved ahead of time, just to be ready for this. Uh, thank you, Mayor and Board, for the opportunity to speak tonight on our annual conversation on Arbor Day. Uh, Arbor Day celebration, as was already mentioned by trustee Schmidt, is taking place this year on Friday, April 26th. And the Parks Division, along with the other, other parts of the village, including our preschool, our PATH program, and the Kiwanis Club, will be celebrating by planting trees around town and on the campus here. During that time, staff will share the benefits of trees and their roles in the environment with the students and the clubs that are there. And just a few pictures from last year's Arbor Day to show some of the fun that we had. Last year, we had our preschool program that planted one here just outside of the west entrance. Then we had our PATH program come and plant something along with, uh, Mayor Coker and trustee Schmidt at the front of the building. And then the Kiwanis Club, along with trustee Schmidt, was out at Nazos Park, and we planted one out there. So we, uh, got a number of trees planted on that day and got things, um, and taught a lot of the kids a lot of information. Now, I know for those of you that have sat through my presentation on a yearly basis, the next slide is what you've been waiting for, and that's those Arbor Day fun facts. So this year's Arbor Day fun facts include that Arbor Day literally translates to Tree Day from the Latin origin of the word arbor. It's a holiday that celebrates the planting, upkeep, and preservation of trees. Although the first Arbor Day was held in Nebraska in 1872, Arbor Day did not become a nationally observed event until the 1970s, when President Nixon included Arbor Day with this other environmentally friendly legislation, including the Clean Water Act, the Endangered Species Act, and many other pieces of legislation. And then our tree fact for the year is that the largest tree in the world is over 379 feet tall and is a coast redwood in California.
One, seven, or seven, zero? Three hundred, you mentioned three.
379 feet. So in 2023, the village was awarded an urban forestry grant that allowed us to inventory all trees in parks, parkways, and on village property. We will be bringing back that report and doing a presentation when the report is finalized. We've learned a lot from the study already, like there are 112 species amongst the 7,412 trees that were inventoried. The village green team wanted to further educate the community on the trees in our parks and is launching on Arbor Day the Hug a Tree Program. There are 10 huggable trees located at parks throughout town. Each huggable tree will be labeled with a sign that will have a QR code to scan. Each of those QR codes will discuss information on that tree, some of the benefits the tree offers, and answers to the, and answers to the online form where, when completed, can be turned in for a coupon to the GH2O Aquatic Center and a chance to win a monthly prize. For more information on the Hug a Tree Program, please visit the website listed on the slide. Don't forget to give our trees a hug and use the hashtag #HugATreeGH to post on your social media. We also have some additional good news, as the village of Glendale Heights is, was named recently for the 27th consecutive year as a Tree City USA award, uh, a Tree City USA Award Honor. The Tree City USA program is sponsored by the Arbor Day Foundation in cooperation with the USDA Forest Service and the National Association of State Foresters, provides direction, technical assistance, public attention, and nationally recognized for urban and community forestry programs. The Tree City Award was started in 1976 and has over 3,500 cities and towns. Glendale Heights is one of the three, of the 200 communities from Illinois that has received that. So thanks to the board and the Parks Department and everybody, we were able to get that award for the 27th consecutive year. So thank you for that, and thank you for the time to do this presentation.
Thank you. Thank you, Director Keith. Very good presentation. Number seven, recognition of the retirement of Director of Public Works Rachel Capron. Our very dear and lovely director, knowledgeable, hard worker ladies is leaving tomorrow. Uh, Mr. Fleet.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Board. Uh, this is the third time I'm saying all this stuff, so, um, we have a lot of celebrations for our department heads who leave, so, uh, but to no avail. Uh, Rachel is leaving us for another country after 14 years of, uh, highly dedicated service to the village. She's been an integral part of the, uh, executive team for the last 14 years. Uh, she's worked, uh, in government and other municipalities for 25 years, hence her retirement.
In this country?
Huh?
25 years in this country?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's the only country that matters.
Okay. Yeah.
When Rachel came here, she came, uh, not knowing anybody, really not knowing anything about the village. Uh, she took it upon herself, uh, to set a vision and goals for her department. Uh, she's currently managing over $20 million in projects. She's transformed the Public Works Division into what it is today. Uh, currently, uh, projects ranging from $10 to $5 million, uh, $20 million over the course of years for our water treatment plant. Uh, she's overseeing the transform, transformation of the treatment plant, uh, all the upgrades that we're taking on now, uh, was under her design, her tenure. Uh, one thing that we didn't have prior to Rachel coming that we do today is a 15-year road program. And our road program today is very robust. Uh, we've gone from spending hundreds of thousands of dollars to this coming budget, almost $5 million on roads. And we have a program in place, thanks to Rachel and her staff, that all roads in the village will be replaced in 15 years. Uh, it's a pretty tenuous goal, but one that we need to achieve to maintain all the infrastructure and roadways that we have. Uh, our water and storm sewer. Rachel has been an integral part of getting grants to replace our water mains as we replace roads, to help facilitate that for our, for our water and storm water and sewage pipes for all of that to be, uh, maintained in a responsible way. Uh, we just redid, uh, James Court Prairie Area, along with the pond on James Court, uh, mostly grant-funded, and alleviated almost all of the flooding, if not all of the flooding that's happened in that neighborhood, uh, over the last 20 years. So thank you, Rachel, for all of that. Probably most importantly, what Rachel has done has left a very strong management team in place. She has developed and trained her management team that when Rachel leaves, there will be not a blip, there will be a loss of leadership, but there will be, uh, four managers in place that will, uh, carry on, a deputy director that's experienced that will carry on. And, uh, as Rachel leaves, she's left herself a legacy, knowing that she's left a strong, She's left a strong department, and she's left the village in a very positive place that, uh, the next leadership can come in and have some very big shoes to fill, uh, with the departure of Rachel. So Rachel, from the bottom of my heart, I'm gonna miss our daily and weekly conversations, but thank you very much for all you've done for the village. Good luck in your future, and we wish you nothing but success, uh, no matter where you plant your feet in the next coming years.
Thank you. I do have a little speech.
Rachel's been back and forth on what she wants to say. It went from, it went from nothing to now she's gonna have a 20-minute speech.
No, it's a little, little short speech. Be a very short speech.
And I will add.
Rachel wants, Rachel wants to speak there.
I'd like to speak first, yeah, okay. So I have thought about this day for some time now, and I can't believe how quickly it has come around where I am making this speech, and this is my last board meeting. All the success of the department was only possible with the fantastic team I had, the pleasure of working with, and I'm truly grateful for their patience, support, and their strong work ethic, particularly the supervisors of Public Works. I am very, every, I am proud of every one of them. I started my journey with the village in April 2010, and during that time, I have seen staff leave and a lot of changes unfolding, some good and some bad, and some sad losses. I want to especially mention my dear friend Raquel Becerra, who didn't get the chance to retire from the village, like we always talked about. I feel I've made a difference to the department, and I've enjoyed working with some extremely bright and talented people. I also want to thank Doug, as he truly respects the department's heads and gives them the autonomy to do their jobs. He supports every one of us and is always fair and compassionate in the most unexpected ways. The department is a strong, the department is in a strong position today, and I am confident that the staff will be more than capable of continuing on with their professionalism, dedication, and expertise like they have always shown in a dynamic and changing world. Finally, I want to thank trustee Schmidt, Marie Schmidt, trustee Meritato, and the mayor for supporting me. Thank you, and au revoir, as I start the next new journey of my life in France. Thank you.
I will add a few words in respect and in retirement of Director Rachel Atopoth, May 6th, 2021, and throughout my position, my personality has been subject to controversies. But I knew this young lady, Director Rachel, she came to my office, and I learned a lot from her. This whole village learned a lot. This, uh, department, Public Works, learned a lot. And it's been three years, and to me, it looks like three seconds, you know? I knew this lady for like three seconds, she's leaving, but a vacuum she's leaving behind will not fulfill, you know, not will, you know? And thank you, Ms. Rachel, for your relentless service, you know? Number, next is a B, uh, public discussion of agenda items. Is there anyone in the public that would like to discuss or comment on agenda item Yes, please give your name and your address.
Just a reminder, everyone, it's a three-minute time limit, so if we could keep it to that, because we have a room full of people, if they wish to speak, we wish to give everybody an opportunity to speak.
Um, Amanda Olson from Glendale Heights. Um, I'll be addressing agenda item number seven on the new business list. So again, that's gonna be item number seven on the new business list. Uh, to the Glendale Heights Board, as a longtime member of Glendale Heights, I am honored to speak with you. I am Amanda Olson, and I am a follower of Jesus. My following of Jesus occurs within the historic peace tradition of the Anabaptists and in a concrete way at Lombard Mennonite Church. As a resident of our world, I watch with everyone and with all at the killings of our brothers and sisters in Gaza. And I know that the killers are hurt too. One cannot kill someone else without killing part of himself. So I'm horrified at the ongoing decisions our Israeli brothers and sisters are making as they kill others, so they kill parts of themselves. I wish for health and life for my brothers and sisters in Gaza, and I wish for health and life for my brothers and sisters in Israel. I make no distinction between them, except for the one they continue to make to the world as I speak. While our Palestinian brothers and sisters have killed 1,200 Israelis, our Israeli brothers and sisters have killed 32,000 Palestinians and are continuing. There is no end in sight. Jesus calls us to peace, Jesus the heaven calls us to turn the other cheek. While I don't know exactly what that looks like within geopolitics, I can say that killing is not justified and that defaulting killing circumvents the creative process. As Thomas Mann once said, "War is only a cowardly escape from the problems of peace." And history and research demonstrate violence begets violence. Given that violence is not the answer, because violence begets violence, and that Jesus and beyond that, our simple humanity longs for an end to the killings, and given that the United States has not called for a ceasefire, we can. If Glendale Heights chose to call for a ceasefire, this would not be the first time that a local body of Americans stood for what is right when our federal representatives failed to do so. We could join life and hope, knowing we have done something for our brothers and sisters in Israel and our brothers and sisters in Gaza, rather than simply vaguely mourn and operate under a cloud of sadness and a feeling of, well, I can't do anything. We can, and we must. My desire and Jesus' desires for peace and life, I may have been raised within a Christian-Zionist perspective, and so I still support Israel's desire for her own country. What I now ask myself, what country do you have when you have chosen killing as a central means to gaining and securing that country? Will they not feel someday, as our German brothers and sisters do, in response to the killings of World War II, horrified at what they have done? This is a scar and even an embarrassment in Germany to this day. We help our Israeli brothers and sisters as much as our brothers and sisters in Gaza by calling them to ceasefire.
That's your three minutes, ma'am.
Okay. I, I ask for Glendale Heights to do what our federal government has failed to do, call for ceasefire in Gaza. This is the way of Jesus, is the way of life, and is the bare minimum we can do. May the US government and the world hear our voice. Thank you kindly.
Hello, my name is Noor Jaraad. Assalamu alaikum wa rahmatullah wa barakatuh. Bismillahir Rahmanir Rahim. I'm here to also speak about the same point, um, that the sister just came and spoke about. I'm not going to try to convince you, um, or anybody in this room, that Israel is an apartheid state, or that they are committing genocide against Arab Palestinians, including Christian Palestinians in Palestine. Um, I'm not going to spit numbers at you, and I'm not going to, uh, ask you to end all wars and for peace worldwide. Um, you may be even asking yourselves, and some people in this room may be asking themselves, what is a ceasefire resolution from Glendale Heights in Illinois and the United States of America gonna do for people in Gaza, people in Palestine? I'm sure that, um, many people in Nazi Germany asked themselves the same things, um, when it was happening, but we are the ancestors of those who come after us, and I think that we would want to be standing on the side of humanity, on the side of preservation of life, um, and on the side that condemns the killing of innocent civilians and children, men and women in Gaza. So I do urge this board, I do urge this village to call for an immediate ceasefire in Gaza without getting into the politics of Palestine versus Israel, without getting into the religious debate of Islam versus Judaism. That's not on the top of the priority list. That is not a conversation for today, while children, men, and women, civilians are being killed, carpet bombed, while their homes are being reduced to rubble, while entire generations of families are under the rubble, dead or dying, found and unfound. We don't know the scale of how many people are dead because it continues to happen. There are no relief efforts, there is no aid. So again, I urge this village, who we have been a part of, my entire family, for the last 20 years or more, um, to call for a ceasefire, so that we can stand on the side of humanity and the side of life preservation. We can have the other conversations later. Right now, what's important is to end the killing and to end the bombing, to end the genocide. Thank you.
I am Pharaoh Ahmed. I'm a 22-year resident of Glendale Heights, Mindoetas. Can I start speaking now? Sure, sure. I am a father of a US Naval Academy cadet. One of my child is in the ROTC program. One of my child is applying for Air Force. I am a committed patriot. I love my nation. I also am very, very impressed when we all take the oath every time we come in for meetings and we say, "Justice and for all." When we say "justice for all," we cannot be selective that it is okay for those people who are willing to kill other people for our geopolitical purposes, but those individuals who are standing up
But those individuals who are standing up for their rights, they can be eliminated, totally decimated, killed without no recourse. We have humanity to stand for. We as Americans have always been known to stand for on the right side of humanity. And I'm requesting our community, my village, to stand up for ceasefire now, because that is the right course. When I said for humanity, I speak for humanity, for the Jewish, the community, the Christian community, the Muslim community, the innocents on all sides. Let's stand up and vote for ceasefire now. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Esther Wilk, I've lived here for fifty-two years and I just want to say that, first of all, this is against the law. And everybody in this room knows that if, if we were having a party here, we'd be all thrown out because there's too many people in here. And then I want to say that I think that this has got to stop. So what we have to do is you guys got to get your big boy panties on and vote about what the ceasefire resolution, and we don't want that here. So, you know, you guys are going to have to vote, so this will all get stopped. So, and another thing is, we didn't start any war. We didn't start any war, Gaza went and took Israel. So they knew what they were doing, right?
No, please speak.
Good afternoon, my name is Amal and I am one of the residents here. I lived in Glendale Heights most of my life. I just wanted to bring to your attention that we as human beings, living here, and especially you are who in power, you hold this power. This power, one day when you go back to your Lord who created you, you're going to be judged for that power. And I will stand there and say that I said the truth. Every one of us will going to sit there and say that we brought it to you, even if you choose to close your eyes and to say anything false, like what she, this lady, what she just said, and choose to put your hands in your ears and to ignore the occupation and the suffering of the Palestinian people for seventy-five years. You can go ahead and choose that. But as a human being, how can you go back to your home and to your warm bed and to your luxury life and know that there is one child in the world is dying because of hunger, because of your tax-paying money that goes to carpet bomb everybody there? I'm one of those people like you who pay taxes and for that, I come to my village to ask you. Be responsible and take at least that motion. That's not, not, we're not telling you to go feed the people. I'm telling you by sitting there, just take that motion, be courageous and stand for truth. This truth, doesn't matter who you are or what religion you are. It's, it's stopping aggression, it's stopping this injustice, this collaborative punishment on all people, women, men, children. This racism cannot continue. You cannot tell me that I, you know, it doesn't, it doesn't bother me. You know, it can be, people can be killed if anyone is harmed or killed anywhere in the world and you have a say in it. You better step to the plate and you better stop that, that harm. And you have that power, don't tell me that you don't. Even in a small portion, even if it is just a declaration, even if it's just a vote. I came here out of my time just to stand here and to do that, because I can't do anymore. But my tax-paying money that I have been paying hard, instead of going to feeding the hunger or, or maybe even helping my students here in the US, I have to make so many declare, I have to make so many rent tames just to get students to get, you know, stuff that they need. But on the other hand, three point eight billion dollars goes to Israel. To what? To kill other people and to just have Israel exist. You know it's wrong.
Ma'am, that you're dreaming.
And it will never be a wrong, two wrongs or a million wrongs is not going to make a wrong. Free Palestine.
I propose a resolution.
Please give your name and your address.
George Farrar, I lived in the village for fifty-nine years. That proposal, resolution, do we tell Hamas to surrender, give up the hostages? They started this, they need to stop it. That's the quickest way to get peace.
Ma'am, ma'am, please be respectful, please be respectful.
Hi, Michael.
That's hopefully enough, right?
My question, my, it's on the same topic, Agenda Item, New Business, number seven. I just want to know how it can be on as New Business Item Number Resolution already, because on the Illinois government website, it says that it has to go through committee and be approved and moved to the board after a discussion. And at the other two discussions, you guys did not vote on it, did not pass it and did not move it to the board with the motion to approve. I'm not saying what all these people want is right or wrong. I'm just saying that it doesn't seem like the correct protocol was followed here. So I want to know how it's already a resolution when it hasn't passed the original committee of the whole.
Doesn't have to go, it can go directly to the board.
It's, that's not what it says on the Illinois website. It says it has to go to, has to be sponsored by a committee member, it has to go to the committee, it has to be passed by that committee and that committee has to move it with the board recommendation.
I'm not, I'm not familiar with what, what statute.
I just lifted it off the Illinois government website.
And I don't know what government's referring to, state government?
Yes.
Well, well, we're not state government.
I know, but just saying, that's always been the protocol here, is the board has moved it from the, from the committee of the whole to the board with the recommendation to concur and then they voted on it. Twice it's been brought up and twice there's been no vote, there's been nothing. And now it's on as a resolution. It isn't a vote of, of no contest, of a no by itself originally?
Well, as a homeroom municipality, it could be taken up as many times as the board wishes they have it heard.
But shouldn't it be back at committee of the whole, not at the board? Why, why would it not be at committee of the whole then?
There's no requirement for it to go to the committee of the whole. It can go directly to the board, as many other resolutions have.
That doesn't make any sense. You guys had the topic discussed twice and twice you have not voted on it. I know, I know that Esther said, and I don't disagree, we need a vote on it to put this to bed. But it seems like you're skipping the committee discussion where voices are heard. All right, that's my comment.
Then the next.
Hello, Glendale Heights, President and Board of Trustees.
Please give your name.
My name is Miriam Sayed and I have been a Glendale Heights resident for my entire life, since I was a kindergartner at Glen Hill Primary School. I've been a community member and my family has lived here, we've participated in all of the civic duties. We've paid taxes, we voted, we've gone to community events. And I want to reiterate my fellow Glendale Heights residents' call for a ceasefire with the New Business Resolution Seven. This is a local issue, as much as people deny that. It's a local issue because we have, I, I go to college at DuPage and I know students whose family members in Palestine have suffered and are facing violence. I know professors who are mental health counselors and who have gone to Palestine as mental health counselors in the twenty-fourteen war. In Plainfield, Illinois, when a six-year-old Palestinian boy was killed because he was Palestinian, that is a local issue. In Lombard, when the two brothers from Lombard were, are missing currently in Gaza, that is also a local issue and that is something that we need to pay attention to. I, I should think that we should bring our attention also to other suburbs that have passed ceasefire resolutions, such as Villa Park and Burr Ridge. As the Board of Trustees, who are considering the ceasefire resolution, I recommend that you refer yourselves to Villa, the Villa Park trustees and the Burr Ridge trustees, as well as the Chicago City. And as of March twenty-twenty-four, over one hundred municipalities across the United States have passed a ceasefire resolution. And whether there's some bureaucratic issues or not, this is something that needs to be solved. And it's not going to be solved by voting no and allowing the violence to continue. It's going to be solved by voting for a ceasefire, voting for an end to the violence and creating a safer, a safer condition for your community members, whether they're Palestinian or whether they're Israeli, everyone is going to find safety in this. And so I recommend that you look at the ceasefire resolutions that were passed in Villa Park and Burr Ridge as you consider your decision. Thank you.
My name is Keith Larson. Good evening. I'd like to thank you for allowing me to speak. I'm here tonight to voice my support for passing a resolution calling for a permanent ceasefire in Gaza. I know some do not think this is village business, but this absolutely is an issue that is affecting people here and all over the world. Not far away in Plainfield, six-year-old Wadia Al-Fayoun was murdered by his white supremacist landlord as a direct result of the violence happening in Gaza. Many Palestinian, Arab and Muslim people are living in fear as a result of the sharp rise in Islamophobia and racism, similar to what we witnessed after nine eleven. I'm not Palestinian, I am Jewish. I'm not visibly Jewish, so I have the privilege of hiding my identity and being perceived as an average white man, which is a privilege many others do not have. But the threat of both Islamophobia and antisemitism is on the rise as a consequence of Israel's actions. Israel intentionally uses Jewish symbols, like the menorah and the star of David, as symbols of terror, with the knowledge that this causes antisemitism and the hope that this will get more white Jews like me to move to Israel in fear. Zionists across the world contribute to this by conflating Judaism with Zionism, equating immutable identity to ideology. As a child, I remember going to synagogue during the high holy days every year and seeing the synagogue guarded by armed police because of the threat of violence whenever a large group of Jews meets in one place. This fear is being weaponized by Israel to justify a genocide of the Palestinian people, spreading the same trauma of my people onto them. This makes nobody safe. Nobody should have to live in fear, but that is the reality here in Glendale Heights because of the violence that is happening thousands of miles away. Passing this resolution would not be unprecedented, as over one hundred other US municipalities have passed similar resolutions and as many municipalities throughout history have passed resolutions pressuring the federal government. Plenty of municipalities passed resolutions leading up to the Civil Rights Act and this was an important strategy to get the federal government to support the will of its people, which it refused to do for far too long. We are in a similar situation today with over two-thirds of US voters in support of a permanent ceasefire. Look at the people behind me. Well, the federal government is ignoring this resounding call for peace. The federal government has failed its democratic duty and that is why we are here. Your people are not being represented in Washington or Springfield. Local leaders like you are the last hope for democracy in this country, though you are not given the same attention as higher levels of government. But this is your time to prove to us how important your positions are as our most direct form of representation. Please consider our words and pass a resolution that supports the shared humanity of all and to amplify our voices for all to hear. Thank you for your time.
My name, my name is Abid Rashid. I live in Glendale Heights and I have been hearing of that Palestinian bond set rocket to Israel, twelve hundred people killed. In a response, they are killing the people in Palestine. I just want to say one thing, that Hamas fired the missiles. In response, Israel attacked Gaza. But the people who are under the rubble, they are not Hamas. Those little kids are not Hamas. The women are not Hamas. Those people who are being killed and pushed to the corner of the, of the Gaza are not Hamas. We are asking for a ceasefire. We are not saying that who killed who. We are simply saying they are innocent civilians that are caught in between. We have to protect their rights, their lives. And we, as a community here, as a sensible community, as a humanitarian community, stand up and ask for a ceasefire. Thank you.
I will take, I will take from this group, which is against ceasefire, so anybody who wants to talk against ceasefire. Okay, then per, ceasefire, please. Go ahead.
Hi, everyone, I'm Farzian Haranani. I am a lifelong resident of Illinois. So last time I came, I heard a lot of things that were a little bit concerning, but I also hear them all the time. I also want to preface my belief that ninety-nine percent of people want to live in peace. We want to live together. I don't think that anyone was trying to silence Amanda's First Amendment right when they told her not to talk about Jesus. I don't think there's a such thing as a radical Jewish agenda or a radical Christian agenda. I think there's a human agenda and that agenda is to live in peace. I also believe both of our sides are asking for the same thing. And I know that sounds wild.
Ma'am, speak in the mic.
Sorry. When you say that we shouldn't be dealing with foreign policy, we shouldn't be dealing with foreign politics, this is not, you know, this shouldn't be our problem. I agree with you. That's what's funny about this, right? We have local issues that need to be dealt with. We have roads that have extreme potholes. And we shouldn't be meddling in wars overseas. But at the same time, America installed Saddam Hussein and the Baathist party back in the fifties. Then they caused sanctions to kill half a million Iraqi children in the nineties. And then they invaded and destroyed most Iraqi infrastructure. So that means that many Iraqis' problems are American problems. My problems are American problems by definition because I am American, right? An American problem, like when I was nineteen years old and I begged my parents for my nineteenth birthday, I just want a motorcycle license, please, please, and they were like, no, you're going to break your neck. You, you can't get a motorcycle license, stop that, maybe when you're twenty-nine. And then I turned twenty-nine and they were like, hmm, we still don't like that. But I think that everyone in this room agrees. We shouldn't be using our resources, our tax dollars, to do these things overseas. Like, did you know we have a thousand troops in Niger? Why? Why are we sending our people over there, our money over there? We shouldn't be doing that. We all know Washington doesn't represent us. I mean, please, raise your hand if you think Washington represents us.
Ma'am, speak in the mic.
Okay, well, I don't think they represent us and I think most of us agree with that. And so we're trying to say, use our money the way we want it to be used. Use our money to focus on our schools, our infrastructure, our safety here, not other people's safety over there. Why are we using our security resolution, our Security Council power to veto things that don't affect our roads, our infrastructure, our sewers, our fire departments? So what I'm trying to say is that when you say, don't bring your country's problems over here, first off, my, my problems are your problems.
Ma'am, your three minutes is up.
All right, thank you. Bye.
Hi, everyone. I am Kessar Trishdi, I'm the resident of Glendale Heights. I'm also a citizen of USA and I'm proud of that and I love USA. So I'm a taxpayer. For the past nineteen years, I've been living and associated with Glendale Heights. And so thank you so much, Mayor, for putting this agenda on, on the citizens' request on this main meeting to be, so that we can hear the public what they want from both sides. So far, we, we were trying to communicate and either the meeting procedure was stopping us or some, something was going on that we were not able to convey our voices. So thank you for doing that. Thank you for, for trustee Yassim, for listening to the people in the past. We support both of you and we support all the trustees. As a citizen, as a citizen of Glendale Heights, I did reach out and we all, many of us.
Also, thank you, Mr. Printi.
Oh, thank you, Mr., yeah, he was part of many of the meetings where citizens wanted to discuss their concerns. And the thing is, we tried emailing, we tried phone calling all the trustees. But I know we are so many and you have, you guys have limited time and limited resources. So we are trying our best to communicate with all of you with the due process. So thank you for putting this agenda and for doing that. I think we are hearing the people and we would like to hear your thoughts also. Because so far, either it was like abstained or somebody was sponsoring it. So we didn't hear what you guys, because you are a representative and the elections are coming up. And there are three trustees I know and the mayor, so we need to know what their thoughts are and how they're thinking. And so we will make our mind who to support and how to support. The other thing is, I would like to request all the participants here. First of all, thank you, everyone. I know, like many of the Islam- I know, like many of the Islamic, not only the Islamic, but the Christian, the Jews, all their representatives are here. I would like to thank MSI, Masjid Ibrahim. I would like to thank Darul Salam. I would like to thank many other local Christian churches who are also supporting the ceasefire effort. So the thing is, we have been given this opportunity to talk today. This is just the beginning. We will continue talking to you guys. We want dialogue. We don't want any protest. We want to talk to you. We want to listen what you guys can offer, and we want to get to a middle point and how we can work together. So we will continue coming. We will continue this effort, no matter this is the platform or whatever is the platform. So thank you, everyone, for supporting it. Let's be peaceful. I will just remind everybody to be peaceful and respect the trustees, and same thing from you guys. So thank you for doing that. Thank you.
Good evening, and thank you, everyone, the trustees and the mayor, for having this resolution brought up again. So, my name is Nazesh Yar Khan. I'm a resident of Glendale Heights for the last 22 years. I run a small business. It's called Writer's Studio, where I teach writing workshops. I've run the business basically on word of mouth. So I use Instagram and Facebook to promote my business, and of course, referrals and reviews. And yesterday, this morning actually, a very scary thing happened. They, on Instagram, they took my business account down. They shut it down completely because I've been posting information about Palestine and the pictures, the gruesome pictures of what's happening there. What I fear is if they start taking away our civil rights and our civil liberties one step at a time, there's no telling where it'll go. I'm not the only one whose small business is impacted because they've taken our Facebook page down or Instagram page down. What I'm afraid of is when we start letting one person's civil rights be eroded, slowly and slowly, it lets the entire society decay because then they next go after someone else who they have a disagreement with. That's my point, is that if Glendale Heights says it's a proud and progressive village, and I trust that it's a proud and progressive village. We've lived here for 22 years. We've been free to practice our faith. I've been an election judge. My children have been raised in the libraries here. I trust that you will do what's right. Because when they come for the rights of one person, one community, one person who's voicing their opinions, and this is happening on Instagram and Facebook where they're taking down our pages just for us voicing our opinions, they're gonna come for you, they're gonna come for others. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Ibrahim Mohammed, and I live in Glendale Heights for the past five years. And I'll just start by thanking the board for allowing us to speak on this issue. And I want to begin with how the Israeli Occupational Government is being provided almost $4 billion of our taxes a year to fund indiscriminate killing of Palestinian Arabs. One example is on February 29th, the IDF opened fire on Palestinians, getting supplies from humanitarian aid trucks, killing 118 and injuring 716 noncombatants in what is now known as the Flower Massacre, adding to the over 30,000 Palestinian kills, and as of January 5th, include 10,000 children. There's also been 466 killed in the West Bank, where Hamas does not exist and has zero influence. My question is, is this where you want your tax dollars to go? Towards a government who leveled the most population-dense city on Earth? We, as humans, should support this ceasefire resolution for Gaza, pre-Palestine.
My name is Becksatul Dasev. I'm a recent resident of Glendale Heights. So I want to start. We, as a human being, usually don't feel who is in front of us. We don't have their emotions. We don't have their feelings. We don't usually know in what kind of situation they are. Now, the three minutes I have, I want you to divide into three pieces. The first one minute, let ourselves put into the place of Israeli government, what they need and what they're doing, and do they really need it? So what they're doing is, they want to continue this war. They want to kill more people. Did they manage to kill those who they really want to? What do you think? As a prime minister, did I manage to kill, to hold those, to accountable those they need to be? Am I managing or am I killing more innocent people now? Day by day, we're sitting here and Israeli military is killing babies, child, children. Now imagine you are those who are giving this order to kill those people. Now imagine you, every single person in this room, imagine. Would you want to continue this? Now, the second minute, I would like to imagine yourself as a father in Gaza, going out every day to find something to feed your children. You don't help it. You're watching your child starving every day. No food, no water to drink, no security. Now, I want you to imagine as a mother in Gaza, who is holding his dead child, body, just dead, your child. You're giving birth, and you don't have the capability, you cannot do anything to keep your baby alive. They're dying infants. Now imagine, put yourself into those places. Now, I want you to come back to yourself. You're sitting here. Now you have the opportunity to vote for one of these people. Do you want to continue this killing, this war? Or do you want to help those people, those children, those fathers, mothers, who have nothing to do, who are waiting for our help? Now it's choice hours. Thank you so much.
Mr. Cheng, let that lady. Ma'am, do you want to talk? Yes, from the other group. You are the next, you know.
You're next. Hi, Cheryl Fran Fullerton, Glendale Heights. First off, thank you all for coming. I wish we could have this kind of turnout every time we have something going on in the village. But unfortunately, it's not gonna happen. We have one in five American children starving. We have one in three American families living in their cars. We just had this last two weeks in Chicago, two young kids fighting for their lives, having a birthday party, getting shot at. Last week, a grandmother driving her grandson home or taking him out for ice cream, 3 o'clock in the afternoon, and a stray bullet goes and ends his four-year-old life. Don't get me wrong, I feel bad for everybody. I wish there was a way we can stop everything, but we can't. And we gotta fix our own home before we gotta worry about somebody else's. Don't think I don't care. I care. But I can't sit here and listen to this, knowing that you don't come when there's problems in Glendale Heights, but for something in another country, you're gonna pack this place and call us murderers and tell us we got blood on our hands. And our tax dollars, we have no control. Hell, all of us don't want to pay taxes. Nobody wants to pay the damn tax. But unfortunately, once it goes to the higher up, they do what they want with the money. No matter what piece of paper you sign, they're still gonna do what they want to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Coker. My name is Nam Singh Mago, and I grew up coming to Glendale Heights pretty much every weekend. I have two aunts and an uncle that live here. And so, one thing that I want to talk about, and I want to do something different, a little different. Assalamu alaikum. Shalom alaikum. Alaikum at shalom is what you would say. And then, satsuri'akal. So what I'm trying to showcase here is that our communities are intertwined. The fabric that is within the gaffaya, the fabric that is within GAZ that literally is named after Gaza because they're master weavers, that they're not able to get any GAZ, the irony that they can't get GAZ and medical supplies in. That's something that I want to touch on briefly. But what I actually want to touch on is the security of all of our communities here at home. Because one thing that I know as a Sikh American is after Sikh Awareness and Appreciation Month was passed as a proclamation in 2020, things look brighter for my community. The education of these proclamations that it can do for a community just by simply having a poster board at a library, having billboards on the street signs and all of that, it brings about unity to our interwoven community. Now, one thing I can tell you that you might not know is my brother-in-law happens to be Ashkenazi Jewish. His family, of course, they believe in equality and justice for Palestinians. How could he marry into my family if that wasn't the case? But every time there's violence in the Middle East, one thing that is clear for the Sikh community, the Muslim community, and my brother-in-law's Jewish faith as well, is that our places of worship need extra security. That is something that is scary. And something that I know as a person that grew up in America, and this didn't happen in Glendale Heights, but when I was five years old, a person basically knocked my turban off my head, and my hair fell to the ground, and people called me a girl, basically for the whole year. And so, the traumatizingness of that act, what that did for me and for my self-esteem, it took years for me to recover. And so, what I want you to understand is that when we educate the public and we educate the public in terms of peace, what we're asking is for peace, return of all hostages. This is a good deal for Israel and Palestine. It's a good deal for everybody. We are asking for peace. But we're also asking for a recognition that children in our community are hurting and that they are picked on, and part of this is we're keeping up this division. And I echo all of the statements with my pro-Israel colleagues that are here too. Because one of the things that we don't want is we want to take care of our homeless. And so, what we have to do when our tax dollars are not spent properly is we have to pressure you. So thank you, and peace on everyone.
Hello, my name is Safaraja. I live here in Glendale Heights. Good evening and salam to everyone. My name is Safaraja. I am 12 years old, and I'm a proud Glendale Heights resident and a proud Muslim American. I'm here today to talk about something very important, the need for a ceasefire in Gaza. Everyone has been hearing about this genocide, and we've all been seeing horrific photos. It's really heartbreaking to see all these Palestinian children, women, and men being killed. We might not be able to stop the fighting ourselves, but we could definitely speak up for peace. We can ask leaders and people in charge to stop the fighting and find a way to solve problems without hurting each other. Imagine if we were in their shoes, scared to go to school, worried about our friends and family. It's not fair, and it's not right. So I want to ask everyone here to join me in calling for a ceasefire. Let's spread the message of peace and ask our leaders to do everything they can to stop the fighting and protect innocent lives. Together, we can make a difference. Let's stand up for peace and show the world that even Glendale Heights, Illinois, a small town in the US cares about making the world a better place. I request that you all call for a ceasefire because you all know this is the right thing to do. This must stop now, and all of you can make a difference. Thank you.
Good evening, board members. My name is Nadat Charad. I have been a member of the Glendale Heights community since I was 10 years old. I moved here from the northern suburbs. And I, which is more than 25 years ago, and I've now been raising my own children as a part of this community. I take them to visit the police station, I take them to visit the fire station to meet our protectors, the people who are members of our community, to know that these are the people who take care of us. I brought them to this very building to get to know, to understand that this is the community that we are a part of, and that they have the ability to make change in that, and that these are the people who care about them. This issue is of primary concern to the vast majority in this community, and the proof is in the attendance. If you look around, she may have said, "Oh, nobody ever cares, nobody ever shows up." But this is proof that people care, people are paying attention. And this issue in particular matters a lot to them because here they are. They don't often show up for a lot of things because they trust you to lead them. They trust you to make decisions on their behalf in the way that represents them. This is an issue that they're worried about. They're concerned that you're not gonna care, that you're not gonna decide the way that they want. So they're asking you as their representatives to care how they care, to represent them. Just like they trust our police, they trust our fire department, they also trust this council to protect them and to protect their interests. I must reiterate what the others have said before me. Government begins in the community, on a community scale. That's why they're here. They're not gonna go to Washington. The vast majority can't. Just like most of you can't just drop everything, they can't drop everything. So they're coming to you and asking you to represent them, to begin the steps, to begin the change. The people in Glendale Heights begin the movement here. It's what's important to them, and it's how it starts to move up in government. We don't have much control over what happens with our taxes. It's true. But this is the first step we do in taking control of that. Simply submitting to the idea that, "Oh, we don't have control, so just let things keep going, and we'll just nitpick on the tiny things," isn't the answer. We have you guys to handle the small issues. This is a giant issue to us. There is a minimum of 35,000 dead, mostly civilians. 70% of them are women and children. You can't just say, "Well, it's not our problem." It is our problem. Just as others have said, we will be held accountable to our descendants who will ask what we did when this extremely well-documented genocide happened. It will not be possible to deny or claim that we didn't know. It's all over. It's everywhere. We see it everywhere. There is no justification for the death of 15,000 children. And that's just children, 15,000. There's no justifications for silence in this issue.
Ma'am, your time is up.
Thank you. It's our responsibility to vote on our conscience, and we're asking you to vote representative of your community. There are some that oppose it, but the vast majority here are for it. So please vote how they are.
Marietta Bridge, Glendale Heights. We talk about all the people that have died, and yet, it's sad, believe me. I have a friend who has family in Palestine. But the one thing that we don't remember are the Qadim family. Tamar and Jotun, and their twin daughters that were six, and their son, who was four, that was killed on October 6th. Leora Aslan, and please forgive me if I'm mispronouncing these names. Asher Beckenin. Lieutenant Colonel Jonen Steinberg. Deborah and Shalomi Mateus. Hayem Katzman. He was a US citizen. Danielle Weldman. She was an American. Igal and Ahmed Wax. They were two Israeli-American brothers. They were killed. Daniel Ben Senor. 34-year-old Israeli-American. I say these names because those people have been forgotten. Those people have lost their lives. On both sides, we've lost lives. I get it. I'm a minority. My family is, I've lost family too. But here's the thing. For us to continuously take over our board meetings, when I want to talk about the grass parked outside or the weeds that are growing up in unincorporated areas, or the garbage, or... We do need to be able to speak and deal with business for the village. And I just think that being able to speak our mind and to be able... and to be able to deal with those kind of issues is of importance. If we can't speak about our issues, then it's very hard to deal with everything else that's going on in the world. We just can't do it. Thank you.
Ma'am, ma'am, don't talk with issues, please.
Hello, dear trustees. Nice to meet you again. My name is Fahim Beg. I live in Glendale Heights, District 4. I just have a couple of questions because I think we have a little bit of confusion. I don't want to make this take all night long because there's so many people here and like my brother Kaisar, he mentioned, or my friend, that we tried to advise people, you know, on timeliness as well as the, the numbers of people we advised to speak, roughly six or so. But majority of these people, they are local residents. We don't know, you know, that we don't necessarily have direct communication with them. But they are Glendale Heights residents. So, my question to you is, at what point are we in the meeting? Because I believe that we are in public discussion before we get into new business. Do we have another segment to go through before we get to the actual resolution where you vote? I'm gonna leave the question there if you can just advise us on the process so that we can move along in it.
There's an agenda, so the public discussion comes before all agenda items. So, we won't start business until public discussion is completed.
So, it's our speaking time right now?
Yes.
And then, once we're concluded with speaking, then?
We move into the business part of the meeting.
Okay. And then afterwards, we'll be committed to the whole?
Yes.
Okay, got it. All right. So, just for the sake, reiterating for the sake of everybody, we are doing the public discussion right now and this is where it is time to speak about the agenda item, which includes the ceasefire resolution. And then, you know, we'll have the opportunity for the trustees to actually make a vote on it. My one request and the request from the trustees is, if we have the similar message, I think, please reflect on what everyone has spoken about. And if it's the same message, it's been heard and let's allow the trustees to do their work and, and get to the, to the actual voting.
That would be greatly appreciated.
All right, thank you.
Michael Antiveris of Glendale Heights. First of all, I want to thank everybody on both sides for coming out and speaking your mind. It takes a lot of courage on both sides to say something regardless of what your beliefs are. However, if we want to get business done, I think the majority have spoken, I think the message has been given to the trustees. And in order for us to move forward and get things done, I think at this moment would be appropriate to let the village do their business, follow through the process of what's on the agenda, and then they'll get to the point that you're all looking for, toward the resolution, either for or either against. But give the opportunity for the trustees to do their government business first and I think we can come to this in a very quick conclusion, okay? And I respect everybody's opinion again, but let them do their due governmental process. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Shahana Kumiri and I live in Glendale Heights. I am part of the D-41 Subcommittee for Equity, or Equity Subcommittee for D-41, which our elementary and middle school is part of. I also volunteer at the women's shelter. I try to involve myself as much I can, but I am a single mom, so time's limited. But I wanted to speak about some of the things that our children go through in this community. There's been recent bullying that has happened in our schools. As you know about what happened in this Queen Bee School with something that was very religious and racially directed. There was another incident at Hadley that wasn't reported. A lot of families are afraid to speak up when things happen because of the publicity that it brings in, because of the pressure it brings from the community in different places. So, I want to make sure that we are aware that there are incidents happening in our schools, whether they become public knowledge or not. Things happen on the buses. I've broken up fights when kids came off the bus with people from different races and religions and backgrounds saying different slurs. And things like that kind of are concerning because it is, it's an impact of how children are seeing us adults view the world, right? And how we respond to things that happen around the world. When we say, oh, it's not our problem or it's not something that happens here, it is. It's, things have progressively become more aggressive since October 7th. There was a woman in hijab with her children at Tony's that got harassed and yelled at by someone else because of her attire. Another incident happened at Walmart. So, these are incidents that are happening in our community. And when we say things like, oh, it's, you know, it's not our problem, it is because it is affecting us emotionally, mentally, deceive visions of children being killed and held by their parents. Like, I can never imagine a parent having to hold their child. That's not something we are meant to be, to do, right? We always expect our parents to pass away, but never our children. And there's 30,000 people that are just dying and if we don't ask for a ceasefire, it's going to continue. As a community, I know that we don't have direct impact on our taxes and what they do, but if we don't speak up, it's going to remain that way. And we do have an impact, actually. It's not that, it's not. But once we come as a community and we speak up, that's when the government starts listening to us and saying, hey, we should be doing it differently. It's not about just letting the government decide everything for us. We are paying those tax monies and we just raised our taxes for our houses.
Ma'am, your three months, or your three minutes is up. Next.
Thank you.
If I could just make one brief announcement. Everybody has the right to talk today, but if you want this board to consider this resolution tonight, if everybody's going to keep on repeating the same thing, we're probably never going to get there. So, just keep that in mind if you want to speak. You're free to speak. You have the right to speak tonight. But we may not get to business if we don't end public comments pretty soon.
I think we have only one more, maybe? She's the last one. Thank you. My name is Vinesh Venbir. I'd like to start by asking a few questions. If everyone in the room could raise their hand to answer these questions, please raise your hand if you condemn Hamas's attack on October 7th. Please raise your hand if you condemn the killings of hundreds of civilians on October 7th. Raise your hand if you condemn the violence and the murder of over 36,000 innocent Palestinian civilians. Raise your hand if you condemn the forced starvation of Gazans for, for the last six months by Israel. We keep hearing war is war and innocent people are unfortunate casualties of war. But after watching six months of women, children, men being brutally killed by the Israeli occupying forces, we can no longer continue to call it a war or conflict. This is not war. According to the International Court of Justice, Israel is now being investigated for plausible genocide. And how is it not Glendale Heights issue? If Glendale Heights are telling you they are dealing with Islamophobia and antisemitism, that alone makes it village business. Have we lost all our humanity in six months? Over 36,000 civilians have been killed, over 15,000 children. 15,000 children have been massacred by Israel. This is why we've been coming here week after week advocating for humanity, asking, begging the board to find their humanity and to stand on the right side of humanity. What should we have done during the Holocaust? Would we have said this wasn't village business? We've been consistently asking you to support and pass a ceasefire resolution in Gaza. We've been going to all the city councils. Our ceasefire resolution urges you to vote for peace in Palestine and in Israel. Our ceasefire resolution asks for, that all hostages from both sides be released. Our ceasefire resolution asks that innocent civilians, including the hostages in Gaza, not be intentionally starved and for the humanitarian aid be permitted entry into Gaza to stop this inhumane collective punishment. In the words of the great humanitarian Desmond Tutu, "If you are neutral in this situation of injustice, you have chosen the side of the oppressor." Let us not be neutral. Let us stand on the side of justice, compassion, and humanity. Ceasefire now, free Palestine.
Good evening. So, I'm gonna make this into a Glendale Heights issue. Oh, sorry. My name is Nada Jazay and I'm a Glendale Heights resident. Our prophet, peace be upon him, said that he, man, neither oppresses him nor does he fail him. He also characterized that our community, the Ummah, as a whole body. And so, one part of the body is in pain, the entire body is in pain. So, as you could see, we are in pain. So, I also wanted to say that being a Glendale Heights resident, we cannot help but see what has happened internationally being brought back here in my backyard. Since October 7th, Islamophobia has been at an all-time high. The backyard, in my backyard at Greenberry Park, that park used to be filled with kids from 3 to sunset, all the time. And when Wadi Al Fayyum got killed, it was empty. Not only that, but as the young lady mentioned earlier, there was a woman who was attacked, egged, right outside of Tony's, the woman at Walmart in Bloomingdale. Of course, it's not Glendale Heights, but I go there. I go there. Women were escorted out because of fear of their safety, you know? And so, I wanted to let you guys know that this, a piece of paper, this piece of paper that you guys are like, why is this so important? Why is this important to us? It be, it's because it actually proves to all of these people here, all of the Glendale Heights residents and friends and family, that you are going to represent us. You guys are making our safety a priority. You guys are making our mental health a priority. And overall, you guys are actually finally representing us as a whole and telling us like, no matter what, we got your back. But right now, we don't feel that way. That's why we don't show up to these meetings, like you said. But I don't blame you. I don't blame you because our leaders also lack to push us into these board meetings. And I vow, I vow, as a Glendale Heights resident, to ensure, I hope, that we come back when not just international matters happen, but local matters are issues, whether it's from school, public schools, taxes, and all the like. Death is wrong all across the board. And I want to take an excerpt from the resolution that you have in front of you. And I want to just mention this, okay? The residents of Glendale Heights, and I want everyone, if anybody agrees to this, to please stand up. The residents of Glendale Heights condemns all forms of racism, antisemitism, and all forms of hatred amongst humanity.
Ma'am, your time is up.
And now I ask, do you guys agree with that? Please stand. So, I ask you now for you to stand with us. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Nancy Roberts. I apologize, I'm not, I'm not a resident of Glendale Heights, but there are some issues that I really very much want to address. An earlier speaker had, had pointed out rightly that 1 in 5 American children goes hungry. And as she didn't mention, but I would add to that, many Americans cannot afford healthcare. And we have a severe homelessness problem. It is a stain on our nation. Furthermore, we have a terrible problem with violence in our cities. And we have tragic incidents like the young child who was hit, who was, who was killed by a policeman and, and many other issues that involve police violence. So, the point here is that the funding that we provide, without question, to Israel, regardless of what crimes it commits, is a crime against our own country. The, the dollars that are going to fund Israel's occupation, illegal occupation of another land, are being stolen from the American people. I would like you to know that many of our police forces in the United States receive their training in Israel. They come back and they replicate the very cruel practices that they learn in Israel on our own people. Furthermore, you may recall that during the, during the, the, what do they call it? The COVID, COVID epidemic, yes. Our, our government, they, they passed something called the Child Tax Credit. This Child Tax Credit lifted almost half of the children that were in poverty in the United States out of poverty. It was wonderful. But what did they do? Right after the pandemic was over, they, they repealed it. What about these children? Don't these children matter? But the minute Israel cries for help, we send billions of dollars. There is a, as though, as though there is a bill before Congress now that would give them $26 billion. That money belongs in here. It belongs here. It belongs in Glendale Heights. It belongs in all of the cities around our country. So, I don't think people understand the intimate connection there is between our, our government's undivided, unthinking, unconscionable support for another country that is basically violating international law every hour of the day. So, if we care about ourselves, if we care about our own community,
Ma'am, your time is up.
we must call for a ceasefire and the end of all funding to Israel. Thank you.
I, I would just ask out of respect, if there's no one else who wishes to speak so this, the board could conduct its business today, that if you don't have anything different to add to what's already been said, that you let the board continue on with their business? Well, ma'am, you have the right, you have the floor. You have the right to talk.
My name is Reem Townsend. I'm here to encourage the board to move forward with a vote on a ceasefire in Gaza. You all heard the comments. Don't hide behind silence or there were a lot of public comments. It's on the agenda. When the vote comes, motion and second, and then have your discussion. You won't be an anomaly. Hundreds of municipalities across the country have passed one. It won't make Glendale Heights receive hate or threats. Municipalities have passed resolutions and their lives have moved on. It's actually peaceful to say the bombing and killings needs to stop. It's peaceful to want food and aid to finally be let into Gaza. By staying silent, you're supporting more killing. By refusing to say ceasefire now, you're supporting the action which is genocide. Look at this room. The community is mobilized and will continue to be mobilized. Over are the days where people don't believe local government matters. Again, when the agenda item comes up, motion and second and stop hiding behind silence. Thank you.
Oh, excuse me. Excuse me, Peter?
Yes.
Excuse me, Peter?
Yes.
He's the last one.
Can we make this the last?
I can only encourage them to let the board conduct this.
Well, we got, we got a ton of business to, to get done.
I agree.
I will try and take only one minute.
Yes, go ahead.
My name is Asif Youssef. I do not live in Glendale Heights. I live in DuPage County nearby. This is strictly a humanitarian issue. It's not about who's right and who's wrong. It's not about the underlying conflict, which a lot of us have strong opinions on. It's about sending a message to Washington. Nothing you do here will directly change a decision, but it will send a message to our politicians in Washington. And unfortunately, Washington produces the best politicians money can buy and they need to hear from us. They need to hear from the people. They need to hear from local government. What you have a chance to do today is to affirm the moral compass of the village government of Glendale Heights, strictly for humanitarian reasons. What's happening is wrong. It is genocide. It shouldn't happen and our government shouldn't be enabling it with weapons, money, and diplomatic cover. So, thank you respectfully for your time. Please do the right thing.
Hold that. That was the last, you know, I mean. We love to give time to everybody.
You know what? Time.
I'm gonna have to advise you, you have to let them speak if they want to speak tonight.
Let these three people speak.
But we will not get to a vote tonight if it gets too late.
My name is Mohammed Ajmaluddin Sharif. I live in Glendale Heights for the last 15 years. So I want to put a different perspective as you've been requesting it. I have friends, like my portfolio is vast. I have Muslim friends, Hindu friends, and Jews friends. So I've been working closely for the last 20 years with Jews. They are very nice people, I go to their home. So I want to bring you to one thing. When people say the war started on October 7th, the war started 70 years ago when they occupied it. I have been, I don't know how many people are here who have been to Israel or Jerusalem. I have been twice over there. I have seen the humiliation of entering into Israel just being a Muslim. I am having a security clearance. I am a Global Entry member, but still just because I am a Muslim, they harass me. They put me on hold for four hours. If you guys don't know about it, our government share our data with Israel. So they know where I'm living. When I came to United States, how many country I visited. So apart from supporting them with money, they support them with all the information. So what I have seen, sitting there for four hours in Israel, immigration, that all the Palestinians who are entering, citizen of Palestine entering through their immigration, they get humiliated. They get humiliated by young girls. They get humiliated by young boys. So I have seen from my own eyes that not once, twice, I've been there last year in January in 2023. So I think we need to understand this problem is not new. So our government needs to stop funding them and giving all our information over to them. So I wanted you to humanly support the ceasefire resolution. And we are not against Jewish people. As I said, I have been working with Jewish people for the last 20 years. So I wanted all these members to vote for the resolution. Thank you.
One more to go.
Hello, my name is Ken Robinson, I live in the village of Glendale Heights. And everybody in this room is a taxpayer, so. But I've been listening all night, I've been listening for a couple meetings now, and everybody's talking about Israel attacking Gaza. Has anybody thought about Israel? Every angle, Israel's under attack from every different angle. Every different angle. They have the right to protect themselves. You can't tell me that if a war didn't start out here in Chicago, that you folks would not pick up arms to defend yourselves. They're doing the exact same thing, they're picking up arms to defend themselves. All these speeches are from the river to the sea, that's just to destroy Israel. And that's not gonna happen. They've got the right to defend themselves, but nobody here has mentioned as far as Russia attacking Ukraine. Nobody's mentioned about Libya attacking, or Iran attacking. How come nobody said anything about a ceasefire about that?
Ma'am, if you do not come, I have to escort you off, you know? So this is the last warning.
I feel like I'm on a college campus here and people are saying, we're gonna have it our way, board, you have to vote our way. And that's it. The board's already voted, they've already voted on it twice already. You want a third time? You can bring this up every meeting, but this will not stop. They'll be here every meeting. Somebody's gotta lay down the law saying this has gotta stop. I rest my case.
Is there anybody else?
Come on, Peter, we gotta get going.
Only 23 years and it is not about a fine.
Well, we're not gonna get the agendas done if we don't.
I agree, we've warned them, we're not gonna get to the agenda.
From many speakers and my previous attending, previous meeting, and all the people here, it is very clear that there is a huge disconnect between the trustees, between the board, and the people. And one speaker has suggested there has to be some talk from members, from the trustees, what they think, so that people can know and clear anything if they can, and know both sides, so that this disconnect and this big gap could be covered. So I would suggest that there should be a specific session where the trustees speak out their mind, and if there are any differences, if there is lack of information there, so things could be tried out to cover. Because you are not supposed to do what you like. You are supposed to do what people expect from you. All people, not just one kind of community. That's it, that's my observation.
I'm sorry about that.
Please.
I am Alexia Gomez, and I think it's important to note that I came here not knowing really much about this. And I just knew that I had to attend a village board meeting for AP Government if I'm being completely honest. And I've heard both sides on both topics. And I came in here unbiased, not really knowing what I was going on in. But now that I'm here and that I've heard both sides, I want to voice my opinion. And we need to help those people in Palestine. We need to help think about the children and think about the people that are being under attacked right now. And that is, I just wanted to give my unbiased opinion because I came in here not really knowing much. And I'm sorry if I upset anybody here, but we need to call a ceasefire, we need to help the kids out there. We need to help because we have the power to. Thank you.
I'm just gonna say we're gonna end this. We had a very long meeting last night, over three and a half hours with Doug, and several of Doug Glendale Heights residents and non-residents. And it was a very productive meeting, I just wanted to say that. And we just wanna make sure that we all do the right thing. I'm not gonna take up too much of your time, but this is a very, very important issue. I'm not gonna talk about any speech from myself, but I'll tell you something that a Jewish historian just recently said in New York City regarding what's happening in Palestine and Israel. His name's Elon Papé. These are his words. "A settler colonial movement, a project that tries to create a nation out of religion, is not going to work in the 21st century. We're witnessing the beginning of the end of Zionism. There is no doubt about it. I'm not saying it as a prophecy or as wishful thinking. I'm saying this as an expert, an academic on Israel. My thesis is built on research, not wishful thinking. There is clear indication Israel will implode from within. We already saw the struggle before the October 7th. A vision for the children of Israel, for the grandchildren of Israel, that you would live from one war to the other, one cycle of violence to the other, is a vision that most young Israeli Jews who have a different passport, who have known other places, would not remain in Israel. You don't stay for 50 years in a place that is going from one war to the other, even if you win those wars, because as we know, nobody wins in wars." So implosion from Israeli society, within Israeli society, is another indicator. Economically, growing number of people below poverty in Israel. Most Israelis cannot afford to buy a house, even a flat. Many cannot afford to rent. Unemployment is rising, and there is this idea that the American financial aid, which is huge, which will last forever. So another important indicator is the economic erosion of Israel as part of the disintegration of the Zionist project. The big move in civil society in support of Palestine, what I call global Palestine. Global Palestine is amazing alliance of people who believe their struggle against injustice is the same as a Palestinian's struggle against injustice. And they will begin to have an influence on the government. Let me finish by saying that what is really worrying is that from the history we know that the disintegration of regimes like Israel is usually the most dangerous period for everyone concerned. Because the regime is fighting for its life. This is true about South Vietnam. This is true about South Africa apartheid. So warning is all. We are in times of existential danger for Palestinians. That's why we have to
Sir, your time is up.
Politically, it is
Sir, your time is up. Thank you. If there's nobody else, public comment is closed.
I will give some final comments on this. My father, in Second World War, he was fighting on the side of allies. And at that time, 6 million Jewish were killed by Hitler. After that, there is Ukrainian, war is going against Ukrainian people. Ukrainians are fighting for their land, for their life, for their property. And now, finally, we are coming on again Gaza. It's not Jewish or Muslim or Christian or any other issue. This issue is some evil people who got control, like Hitler got in Second, before Second World War, and he had Second World War. We are, to me, I'm feeling this issue is going towards Third World War. And what is war is destruction. To me, there are two brothers, you know, children, Isaac, Ashmael. Their children are fighting for a piece of land. That's not right. Human lives are being, humans are being killed, property is being destroyed. This is not good for US state, this is not good for Muslim state, this is not good for any state. My father was fighting on US side today, and I am not fighting against US. I have been student of UIC John Marshall. And throughout my life, I went through my professors, US professors, they were very kind, very helpful. One day, before I was sleeping, I was thinking, if any Jewish professor give me hard time, I could not find any. I found they helped me a lot. When I came to this country 40 years ago, two, three Jewish family, they invited me for dinner and lunch. Today, we are at the same time. So now you said that, you know, our board is against you, it's not against. Is our board, because of blessing of our board, you people are here from all walks of life, and we are listening you, we are hearing your issue, and we are considering your issue, you know? So with that, I want to brief myself and move on.
All right, mayor, okay? So now that the public section of this meeting is closed, please understand the public involvement with this meeting tonight is over. You are free to stay here, but please don't interrupt the business of the board. Let them have their discussions, let them do whatever they're gonna do for all the businesses that's before them without interruption. Thank you very much.
You have the consent agenda before you. I think village administrator Doug Flynn, please read the consent agenda.
Thank you, mayor. One, approval of the regular board meeting minutes of April 4, 2024. Two, approval of the committee hall meeting minutes, April 4, 2024. Three, approval of the special board meeting minutes of April 8, 2024. Four, approval of the accounts payable listing of April 18, 2024, in the amount of $2,093,266.68. Five, ordinance to amend Article B entitled User Service Rates and Charges of Chapter 2 entitled Water Use and Service of Title IX entitled Water and Sewer of the Village Code of the Village of Glendale Heights. Six, an ordinance to amend Article S entitled Connection Fees, Service Charges, Industrial Cost Recovery of Chapter 3 entitled Sewer Use and Service of Title IX entitled Water and Sewer of the Village Code of the Village of Glendale Heights, Illinois. Seven, a resolution to approve and authorize the execution of agreement between the Village of Glendale Heights, Illinois and Limebarger, Goggan, Blair, and Sampson LLP for the collection of delinquent accounts. Eight, a resolution to approve and authorize the execution of agreement between the Village of Glendale Heights, Illinois and Christopher B. Burke Engineering, Limited, for the furnishing professional final engineering permitting services for the Armory Creek Reef's 13 and 14 Steam Restoration Project. Nine, a resolution authorizing the execution of Change Order Number 1, final, final, for the West Fullerton Avenue Water Main Replacement Project in the Village of Glendale Heights, Illinois. Ten, a motion to approve pay request number 3, final, to J. Condon Sewer Service Incorporated for the West Fullerton Avenue Water Main Replacement Project, total amount not to exceed $124,912.62. Eleven, motion to approve pay request number 4 to Hoare Construction Incorporated for the North Avenue INO Repairs Project Phase 2, total amount not to exceed $107,220.2. Twelve, a motion to approve pay request number 7 to Bodler Construction Company for the Water Supply Facilities Rehabilitation, total amount not to exceed $154,054.80. Thirteen, a motion to approve pay request number 7 to IHC Construction Companies LLC for the wastewater treatment plant phosphorus removal upgrade project, total amount not to exceed $901,088.95. Fourteen, a motion to approve pay request number 7 to Tronner Associates for the Mill Palm Lift Station improvements, total amount not to exceed $133,650. Fifteen, is approval of consent items.
Is there a motion to approve consent agenda? Trustee Schmidt and trustee Siddiqui.
I move that the board approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second, roll call vote, please.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Meritado?
Yes.
Trustee Pochek?
Yes.
The consent agenda is approved. Old business, there is none. New business? Motion to waive first reading on new business item number 2 through 4. Is there a motion to waive first reading on new business item 2 to 4? Trustee Light?
So moved.
Trustee Pochek? Second, discussion. None, roll call vote, please.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Meritado?
Yes.
Trustee Pochek?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Is there a motion to waive first reading on business item 2 to 3?
2 to 4. 2 to 4.
2 to 4. Number 2, an ordinance to approve and authorize the annual appropriation ordinance of the Village of Glendale Heights, LNI. First reading is waived, this is ordinance 2024-131. Is there a motion to adopt ordinance 2024-31? Trustee Light?
So moved.
Trustee Pat?
Second.
Discussion. Roll call vote.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Meritado?
Yes.
Trustee Pochek?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
The motion to adopt ordinance 2024-31 is approved. Number 3, an ordinance to amend Section 3-2K-3 entitled Imposition of Tax and Section 3-2K-6 entitled Filling the Returns of Article K entitled Tax on Purchase of Motor Fuel and Detail of Chapter 2 entitled Village Taxes of Title 3 entitled Finance and Taxes of the Village Code of the Village of Glendale Heights, LNI. First reading waived, this is ordinance 2024-32. Is there a motion to adopt ordinance 2024-32? Trustee Schmidt?
So moved.
Trustee Light?
Second, discussion. Roll call vote.
Trustee Meritado?
Yes.
Trustee Pochek?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
The motion to adopt ordinance 2024-32 is approved. Number 4, an ordinance waiving proposal requirement and authorizing the execution of a three-years agreement for the purchase of beverage for resale and at the resale at the Glendale Heights, Glendale Lakes, Garkos facility, first reading is waived, this is ordinance 2024-33. Is there a motion? Is there a motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty four dash thirty three, trustee Pat?
So moved.
Second.
Trustee Siddiqui, second. Discussion, roll call vote.
Trustee Pochek.
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt.
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui.
Yes.
Trustee Light.
Yes.
Trustee Miratato.
Yes.
The motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty four dash thirty three is approved. Number five, an ordinance to amend Section one dash five dash four entitled office hours of Chapter five entitled official and administrative provisions of Title one entitled administration of the municipal board of ordinance this of the Village of Glendale Heights, LNI, first reading. Number six, a resolution of authorizing the execution of a software as a service agreement with Tyler Technologies for Enterprise Resources Planning Software, this is resolution twenty twenty four dash R dash thirty five. Is there a motion?
Fifty-three.
Uh, fifty-three, twenty twenty four dash R dash fifty-three. Is there a motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty four dash R dash fifty-three, trustee Schmidt?
So moved, second.
Uh, Pat, second, trustee Pat, second. Uh, discussion.
Yeah, I have a quick question. Uh, Mr. Pauling, is this the one which the presentation was given to us in the couple of last board meetings, correct? Is that the same company, the, uh?
It's the same, it's the same company.
And did you get their proposal about our HR and all that stuff?
Yes, sir.
Uh, you did that. So could you maybe, you know, because I wanna see that and I want to have a meeting with them to discuss about their.
In the, in the, in the budget book that I presented to you, there's a comparison of their product and Paycom
Okay.
conducted by our HR manager.
Okay.
There's a pretty thorough review of both products that's in that binder I gave you.
Okay. So what do you have decided then? Is it like?
Well, we're under contract with Paycom for two more years, so.
Two, okay.
Until our contract's up, we're bound by our contract, but we're reviewing it. Uh, we reviewed Munis HR software when we did our review of HR software and their product doesn't really compare to what the Paycom product does.
Okay.
And we didn't, we didn't make them part of our final vendor for the HR software that we purchased a couple of years ago. So we reviewed Munis then, we didn't, we didn't prefer it as a, as a product and we went with Paycom, our current provider. But there's a breakdown that HR manager Cahill did comparing the product of Paycom versus the product of Munis, their, their HR system.
All right, Mayor.
Mayor.
Yes.
Doug, is there gonna be a difference in pricing two years from now? Because you said we were Paycom.
Well, we're always gonna get a three to five percent increase in every product that we have. I mean, that's just, it doesn't matter what piece of software we have, we get a three to five percent increase every year.
Okay, is, I'm, I'm gonna be off the wall, is there any way we can buy out Paycom?
No.
I mean, do you care?
No, we, the, the sheer, that would be impossible. The, the sheer amount of work that would take to bring a new vendor in that quickly, it, it's not, it's not reasonable to do, it just isn't. Not to mention the upfront work that was done. Oh, oh my gosh. I mean, thousands of hours have been put into our current system. And it's running, I mean, it's a great piece of software and we use it for everything, every day. Oh, okay. All right, thank you, Doug.
Anybody else? Yes, anybody? Just, no. Okay, what I recall, Mr. Flynn, HR, they mentioned that their software is far better than Paycom, you know.
Uh, they're salesmen, they're supposed to tell you that. I would tell you that it's not.
Okay, roll call vote, please.
Trustee Light.
Yes.
Trustee Miratato.
Yes.
Trustee Pochek.
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt.
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui.
Yes.
The motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty four dash R dash fifty-three is approved. Number seven, a resolution calling for a permanent and immediate ceasefire in Gaza. This is resolution twenty twenty four dash R dash fifty-four. Is there a motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty four dash R dash fifty-four?
Motion, so moved.
Trustee Siddiqui, I need second. Trustee Schmidt, second.
Joe Schmidt did.
Yes, second. Uh, discussion. Yes.
All right, so now it's our time to talk and I just wanna clarify a couple of things. I brought this resolution in the couple of meetings ago and I've been labeled as Hamas agent. I've been called, I'm hiding behind something and where are you? You are the one who brought this up to our village. So I just wanna clarify things. As I heard from all different aspect of people, I heard people openly, you know, saying that they are Jewish and they are, they want this resolution. I heard from our Christian brothers and sisters, I heard from every aspect of life, I've heard from Sikh community. So this is not something which I call a Muslim issue or something, this is a humanitarian issue. And when I look at it, and if I commit something, I, I always analyze and I want to see what are the pros and cons. So, so far, what I've been hearing is that this issue is not our issue, this should be going to Washington. But when I talk to the people, and I raise this issue actually, when I talk, couple of the people who approaches me that they want to bring this resolution, I say, why don't you go to Washington? They've been told that, no, you cannot come to here because in, in, in Congress or in Senate, they cannot come and express their views. So they have to approach their local village council and that's where they can talk and they can express their views. So I understand that. Uh, then the, uh, other issue is that, hey, why we, 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 we have to, is this something anti-American we are doing here? No, this is what the Biden administrations take is also, they also want the ceasefire, they also want this thing to be done. So this is not something which we are discussing against America or against any country. This is purely something that take ground on human basis. So I wanna ask my fellow trustees to be on the right side and say yes to this resolution and have the people heard and, you know, it's, it's not against anyone and it's, it's for the people and you guys are right, we are here to represent you and we heard you. You, you guys come here and first of all, thank you very much for being a disciplined crowd. I am seeing children here and I'm seeing mothers with young children committed to this. Uh, and, and, you know, they, they, they really sit very quietly and I, I really listen every one of you and I've been touched. So again, my humble appeal to all my trustees to be on the right side and have this approved. That's all, thank you.
Anybody else from trustees? No. Uh, roll call vote, please.
We need to, we don't have a motion.
We did, we said, yeah, we already.
And we have two.
We have first and second.
Roll call, we are roll call.
Trustee Miratato. Trustee Miratato.
No.
Trustee Pochek.
No.
Trustee Schmidt.
No.
Trustee Siddiqui.
Yes.
Trustee Light.
No.
This motion is not approved. Uh, let me explain, I do not have vote in this, I do not have vote, you know. I have vote, I can just vote for tiebreaker, I do not have vote. There's a reason, I have no vote. As I indicated before, the public section of this meeting is over. Thank you. With respect, Mayor does not have to vote in this resolution. That's the only reason I did not vote.
Just wait, guys, just wait and watch. You guys going to pick us up, you guys going to be out of the office very soon. You guys going to be out of the office very soon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you, Mr. Siddiqui.
Thank you, appreciate you guys. This time, best time for humanity. We're, we're proud of you guys, you are the best. We'll support you, don't worry, we got you. We don't back them out, only when elections come here, that's when you do things.
And good thing is you have awareness now and you are participating in board meeting, that's great news.
Don't get angry, vote, don't get angry, vote. We will vote, you guys just wait and watch. Get relaxed, relax. We cannot, we cannot be, we cannot be disrespectful.
If we could everybody sit down or please exit the room, we need to continue the meeting.
People who are leaving, good night, good night, everybody.
That's amazing, how we vote, massacre of the children, it's amazing.
Sir. We either should continue the meeting or take a short recess.
Only need this motion to adjourn.
Give it thirty seconds.
My eyes twitch.
I, I, I should do it.
Are you really getting things?
Yeah. It'd be quick. It's okay.
For a meeting, is there anyone in the public that would like to address this board meeting on agenda item only from public?
There being none, we continue.
None, executive session, there is none. Adjournment, is there?
Motion to adjourn.
Trustee Siddiqui.
Second.
Second, trustee Pochek. Is there motion, oh, okay, done, roll call vote, please, roll call vote.
Trustee Schmidt.
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui.
Yes.
Trustee Light.
Yes.
Trustee Miratato.
Yes.
Trustee Pochek.
Yes.
This meeting is adjourned. Trustee Miratato, you have the committee of the whole meeting.
Okay, I'd like to start the committee, the whole meeting, Thursday, April eighteenth, twenty twenty four. Mary, can you note this present?
Noted.
Okay, does anyone have any additions or deletions? Okay, none. Okay, I'm sorry, I got two.
You got two?
Yeah, they'll, they'll be quick. Uh, the budget and committees. Okay, we'll run, we'll run right down to the committee reports. Representative, Glendale Lake Golf Club Committee, we had a meeting, April sixteenth, twenty twenty four. It went pretty fast, we had nine hundred and eighty-nine rounds of golf in the month of February. Last year at this time, at that time, we had none. So I think we're off to, we're off to a good start for, for the year. We also are hiring part-time employees. So if anybody out there looking for a part-time job, check out the golf course website or just go there and grab an application. Uh, that's about all for the golf course for that meeting. Our next meeting, we didn't figure out when it's gonna be, Keith, did we?
No, no date was set.
No. Okay, move on, historical house, Mike?
That'd be me, yeah. I just wanted to update on the historical house, we've already got Glen Side Middle School. They wants to do a field trip, they, and bring the kids out to the historical house on, on the twenty-fourth, which I think is fantastic, we'll have two different sessions of them from nine to eleven, then noon to one-thirty. So it should be interesting, it's gonna be a great time and I'm sure everyone will be very happy with all the events we have going on scheduled for out there and I'll release those later. Thank you, that's all.
Okay, we go to, well, this committee, Mary's not here, but there's no report on their committee. Parks and Recs, that's me again. Let's see, when did we have a park meeting? No, we didn't have a park meeting, so there's no report on the park meeting until the next meeting. What is that? Do we have a date?
Yeah. Give me a second, I'll get back to you.
Ah, okay, no big deal. Uh, property enhancement committee.
No report.
Senior Citizen Advisory Committee, it'd be Mary and there's no report for that committee. So is anybody like to address this committee? On a agenda item or anything they would like to say?
Yes, it was from the board meeting, Sharon Ferris Glendale Heights, thank you very much for passing this senior discount rate on the water bill. When can we sign up for the discount?
So we're getting the forms printed right now and as soon as they are in our hands, we'll make available.
Okay, so check.
You'll need to come to Village Hall to fill out the form.
You think within a week?
Probably, probably, they've been at the printer now for a week or so, so they should be here any day.
Okay.
I can let you know, I'll let you know when they're.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next, state your name, please.
Hi, my name is Sarum Khan. Um, I'm actually not from Glendale Heights, I'm from unincorporated Glen Ellen, which is, um, right off North Avenue, which is, um, behind suburban tire, if you guys know. Um, this is mainly for the police chief. Uh, recently, one of our neighbors was given a citation for exiting. Um, he was going on Glen Rise Avenue and Glen Rise and intersection of North, basically. He wanted to go westbound, so he would have to cross a right turn lane, then three lanes, then there's a median, then there's three more lanes of traffic that he has to. Obviously make sure that there's nobody coming before he takes that left turn. So he made that first, uh, four lane cross. He waited in the median to make sure there's nobody coming for a couple of seconds and then he went over. And he was given a citation for that. So, and he was told you're not allowed to stop in the median. So, two things, one, um, in a highway that's this big, it's almost impossible to not cross unless you guys want more accidents. It's almost impossible that we don't stop on that. And a lot of the times, especially at the time he did it, it was around like four forty-five PM, I wanna say, it's rush hour. So, the, I don't remember the name of the street, the street where Menards is, that's usually, uh, packed. Then Glen Ellen is usually packed and all the way down to pretty much this intersection, it's all packed. So, even if he wanted to, he could not have gone until, unless he wanted to hit the car, that was stopped right there. So, one, I wanna know if this is even illegal to begin with, I consulted a lawyer, he's saying very technically, if you look at it, it is wrong. But in a highway like this, nobody usually says anything, there's always a cop that's posted over that warehouse right in front and we cross, we stop all the time. Never been stopped. Um, so I wanna know if it's illegal and two, if it is, then either we should do a no left turn there or put a signal or I don't know what the procedure would be.
Chief, I'm gonna ask you not to comment since it's a pending matter. Thank you.
Hello, um, since we're talking about parking tickets, I got one and, um, I was driving home from, you know, my meetings and my kids picking them up. And I saw that we couldn't park in our area because we're getting our, our road done in Glendale Heights. In front of our house, we have, we're supposed to be parking on the side. And when I went to go park, all the cars were parked outbound. And there was one car on the inbound and I was like, who's right? And I was like, it's gotta be the most majority and I didn't have time to look and I know that they said to park on the south side. I don't know what south side is. So I parked on the left side where all the other cars were parked and then the next day I got a ticket. So, I, I don't know if it was because of the instructions that we got, they said southbound, there's no board or anywhere that says southbound, I don't know what that means, I mean, south side is what they said. But there's a lot of cars that got ticketed, it was fifty bucks. Um, I just got my job and I don't know if anybody else is, you know, but I don't think anybody was trying to be wrong or just disrespectful, you know, they were trying to do their best. But something to consider because that was a lot of cars that probably got ticketed and I don't think they did on purpose, it was one guy that was right, I should have, you know. Not gone with the majority, but something to consider when there's a lot of cars that are wrong, I don't know if, if there's a notice we can send out public to correct them instead of punishing them for not knowing. Thank you.
For the same, I would ask you for the same reason, it's a pending matter.
Yeah, no, I just wanted to make that comment, thanks.
Yes, my name is Masih Khan, uh, I'm from the same neighborhood where the boy was. Unincorporated Glen Ellen behind the suburban tire. I want to request the council that if that is illegal, I, I don't wanna comment, but if that is illegal, they, you guys need to come up with some proper instructions. So no, uh, none of our neighbor or the same thing will happen at the, the Greenbrier exit, they will have, have the same thing. So you guys need to put the proper instructions there, so nobody will get the, uh, the ticket again, thank you.
Hi, I'm Moreta Britt. Um, driving down Bloomingdale Road, I've noticed the intersection at Brandon and Bloomingdale Road. Um, that office park there, their trees or, and bushes look really ratty. I've noticed a lot of utility boxes with the boxes pulling off, that looks terrible and it just, driving down Bloomingdale Road, it just doesn't look neat, it doesn't look tidy. And I don't know what we can do about making sure that, you know, all the shrubbery and that the grass is cut, but it just looks bad when you drive in the Glendale Heights. You come in from Bloomingdale, they keep their stuff looking good, you cross Army Trail Road and you hit Glendale Heights. And it's just like driving on Cicero in the city, one side's Old Park, the other side's Chicago, you know the difference. So can we just make sure that we've gotten our, our ducks in a row so that we look really good? Thank you.
Okay, is there any, anyone else?
Oh, I think we have one, can you, motion to adjourn?
Hey, uh, my name is Masin Sayed, uh, I'm from the same community as, uh, the lady, uh, who's speaking, Village, uh, Village of Red Oaks. So where they got ticketed for that, uh, construction thing. Now, uh, I'm also on the board, so I've been, you know, obviously people have been reaching out to me as well, like what happened. So one thing I wanted to ask really was like, I mean, the board was trying to follow up with the police department, trying to get all this arranged properly. And then, uh, we got this communication that, you know, you are supposed to park on the south side like the day before we were doing it. We had already sent out the notices, you know, and until then it was like you can park on, you know, Sherwood, uh, or Drive. Because, and then, so no one knew, again, there was an email blast sent out, but again, not everyone, you know, checks their emails every day, so we had no other way to communicate. So I, I mean, I did try to follow up, so I wanted to request, I mean, I don't know what can be done, but, uh, really, I mean, it was an honest mistake, even if it was a mistake, I mean, and Village was. I mean, the police department was made aware that the construction was going on and everything and we had no other, you know, the residents had no other choice.
I will follow up with you, it's concentrated, so you have my email address?
Yes, I do.
Yes, so please email me and, uh, call me or, you know, we will talk, yes.
Yep, I, I just wanted to know what, what would be the next step, I mean, obviously you're saying that it's under a discussion and all of that, but I wanted to see if we can do something, follow up and, you know.
We will, we will take a look, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
What street were the tickets on Sherwood?
Sherwood, uh, Drive.
Sherwood Drive, yeah.
Thank you, really appreciate that.
So Chief, we will take a look, like, yeah, okay, yeah.
Hi, my name's Yusuf Khan, I've been a resident of Glendale Heights since I was born, um, I just kinda wanted to comment a little bit, uh, not to reiterate some of the things that were already said in the earlier part of today's section. But I think it's really important that I sat here, I don't really come to things like this, but it was a really big to so many people in my community. And it meant a lot to them to be here, that they took times out of the days, people rush home from work to be here because it really meant something to them. Um, and I've lived in Glendale Heights, I went to Glen Bar West High School, I went to Hadley Middle School, I went to Lincoln High School and I've always lived in Glendale Heights. And seeing so many people be so passionate about something and for the vote to not go the same way that the majority had voted for, that's really disappointing to see. We spend time, we had students from AP US government classes, I majored at, at Northern Illinois where we learn about democracy, what democracy looks like. We have a student government association at our school that I'm actively involved with. And to see that our local government isn't reflective and representative of the people who came and spoke before you, it's really disappointing and disheartening. And I really hope you all take that time to reflect on how come your decision didn't match the decision of the majority today, which is how our democracy is made to function. And I think you should really consider the lack of education you might have on the issue, the lack of familiarity you, you have on the issue and really reflect on your own. If you can go home and sleep at night knowing that you made a decision that didn't correlate with what the public wanted and that you didn't uphold your duties today. And I really hope you take the time to continue to engage with the people who are here. Uh, issue that people brought up was that, oh, the people who are here today, they're not gonna be here tomorrow, they're not gonna be here for other issues. Well, part of your responsibility is to engage with those communities and take that time to interact with people even when they don't show up to the meetings. Are you going to the local mosque, the local church, the local high schools to interact with your voters and your constituents to know what their needs are? Are you? And I really hope that's something you consider and that maybe you have this mindset and you're sitting here now thinking, why didn't I make the right decision, why didn't I do the right thing? Well, in a month, you're gonna have that chance again to make that right decision and I hope in that month you take a lot of time to consider, evaluate, reflect and go and educate yourself and learn from all the people who are here today. I hope you took down their cellphone numbers, I hope when they're outside waiting for you, that you go and talk to them and you try to learn from them and that you try to change your perspective, that you go into the room trying to learn something and improve and change your opinion and go in with an open mind. So that way, the next time, you're not gonna disappoint people and you're gonna show that democracy and that the village of Glendale Heights stands for what's right and represents its constituents and represents its voters. Thanks for your time.
Okay, thank you.
I just wanna say something. I just wanna say something. Uh, young man, what's your name, Yusuf? Yusuf, yeah, so that's very good speech and I hope you're gonna keep coming to our board meeting to inspire us and, uh, that's. Young people like you, when they talk and when they have this knowledge of the global issues, it really impressed me, so thank you.
Hopefully, I'll be more inspired to come when I know that our constituents are gonna vote representative of people.
Definitely.
Inspire people to come and have hold of our constituents.
You are the one who's going to check and balance us, you know, you are the one, you know, who do that, so please. Ask other, your young ones to keep coming and involve in our civic duties and that's what we, we are asking, yeah, thank you.
Hello trustees, my name is Vihin Bhai, I've introduced myself earlier before. Um, I had a meeting yesterday, uh, with Doug and, uh, trustee Light as well as trustee Maritato. And I brought up one subject, um, it was about the cricket stadium. I'm not here to talk about cricket stadiums, I'm not here to, um, open up and talk about discussion of the budget or what happened, I have no history about it. All I remember is, a month ago, someone came up and was yelling at the board, asking, what's going on with my cricket stadium? He wanted to play. There was no response to that, I have no idea what happened. To me, what I've seen there, I haven't heard anything, uh, thereafter, I asked yesterday about it, I remember seeing people playing cricket. Uh, last year, last summer, I'm being told, no, nobody plays there. So, either there is a disconnect in what you actually see happening in the village or I'm just, you know, envisioning stuff. Whereas I was there with my kids, the, teaching them skating and, and watching cricket being played. Um, and the response I got was, well, no, we're not gonna talk about cricket. So, that to me is very representative of a great concern that I have. Not only regarding that type of topic, I wanna talk about that or what Yusuf so well articulated, you know, we wanna talk about that. Um, or our activities, uh, that we want to come back to and discuss again and again. Um, as members, what I'm saying is, I wanna come here and have full trust and faith that you, the board, is representing me. And I have a lot, a lot less faith today, not only because of today's, uh, uh, vote, but also because of past interactions, because of what I'm seeing. Um, I want to, eh, eh, you know, and, and what I have, uh, mentioned to you privately in the meeting, but I'm declaring openly here, is that. We went out of our way to organize, to bring community members that, you know, are part of like our congregation and others who, you know, we socialize with. And make our presence here regularly, on a regular basis, so that we don't have to hear from you again and again, why aren't you coming here, why aren't you coming here? We're gonna come here, we're gonna be here, not because of, you know, ceasefire resolutions, but to be present in front of you so we can have proper representation. The problem I'm seeing is that I feel like we're having some different standards over here. Because whereas we've made a strong effort despite a very large crowd, uh, to try to manage them as best possible and making the big effort. Um, what are you gonna do when you have so many people packed and they have their own mind to speak, they're gonna speak it. Uh, on the other hand, over here, even when we have a light discussion, I see the same people here behind me over and over again and they seem to think they have the right to speak their mind whenever they want. And so, when we come.
Sir, you have three minutes.
Thank you, I feel like you call us outsiders or these people call us outsiders and we're held at a different standard, no, we are Glendale Heights residents, we, we're coming here, you see us.
Okay, what I'm gonna do is, uh, what I'm gonna do is getting close to ten o'clock, so I'll take, I'll take maybe two more and then I'm, I'm gonna make a motion to adjourn.
First of all, thank you for you, each one of you, the yes and the no votes, I know some of you guys must have had it tough to make the decision, I understand. I will be taking my time coming month to meet with Pat and Chester and having a potential conversation with her in the social meetings. And then let's have a conversation, exchange some ideas and anybody else who is interested in wanting to have a conversation with me. I am part of the local Republican Party, I am available for anyone here to meet with me and have a conversation about the issues that we as a community discussed. Just because you voted against our issue that we would strongly believe stand, stand for, doesn't make me angry with you, just recognizes the fact that I need to educate you guys more. I'm willing and happy to work with you, please reach out to me, I would reach out to you, to work with you, to try to see what is the reality that is happening internationally. And where we as a nation are hurting our national interest by trying to support an apartheid regime and let us stand for humanity and I love you all irrespective of your position, thank you.
Okay, thank you, I'll take, uh, one more.
Yeah, this is Kesar Chishti again, um, again, thank you everyone, uh, for coming in, thank you all the trustees for your time, uh, for listening everyone and, uh, saying yes or no. Yeah, so I will also like to say that, uh, we as a community will like to, just like we said, I said before, we like to continue the dialogue. Uh, we are human, you are human, uh, we should listen to each other, listen to why you said no, why you said yes, whatever it is. And we want to, uh, maybe, uh, hear our, uh, like, uh, maybe is there, is there something in the resolution which you don't agree with? Then we can work on that, we can modify it, we can come to a consensus, what will work for everyone. So, eh, we will continue that effort and we will come to all the meetings, not just for the ceasefire, but we will come for everything else, whatever is being discussed. So I think as a community, people are realizing that we need to be more active and, uh, we need to be involved in any, uh, like any kind of, uh. Facilities which are needed in the town, the discussions, the budget discussions, the, eh, a common man who is facing trouble with, like, how to reduce the taxes, how they can afford their livelihood. How can we make this area more peaceful? And just I, I would like to give you the example, I live in the, like, eh, like my family's in the, I know in the Aspen Lane area, but also in, uh, Greenbrier Division. And in that area, we have worked with all the neighbors regardless of their faith, uh, Christian, Muslim, non-Muslim, everybody, men, women, sexual orientation, we are in a WhatsApp group. In a moment of, when somebody faces any issue, we reach out to each other and as a community, we, we are doing, because many of our houses were robbed in the past few years, so we watch each other's back. So that's, that's a very good example for other districts to follow, wherever we, whenever we have any issue, we do work together as a community. Now I know that there are other districts where we don't know people, but I think they can also do the similar thing where we interact with each other, because I know many people on the Facebook, they are respectable people here. But they are saying some things which hurt us, so I will not say the name, but we would like to meet with them, we would like to have a coffee with them, intro, invite them to our houses, invite them. To, uh, uh, our parties and see, they can see how we are same citizens that, just like they are. So that, those are a few thoughts, so we will continue the effort, uh, as a team, as a common citizen, as a common citizen of this town. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Pat, I would recommend that you. Alright, okay. Okay.
Thank you, my name is Vinaish Taneer again and I just wanna quote something to prove what the Glendale Heights residents are talking about when we are saying we are suffering. Islamophobia, racism and antisemitism because Muslims are Semites, so we experience antisemitisms. That's not specifically just for Jewish people. Um, this is something that a Glendale Heights resident wrote, I won't name her. Um, if you think this is about Palestine, it's not, when you have people saying death to America, you know the agenda. Remember the nineteen who took over our plains were in their twenties, that guy in Michigan looked like he's in his forties. And this was twenty years ago, so there still is hate for us. And when you see them trying to tear down our board of trustees so they can vote in their people who want their agenda. They should be going off to all their friends to get food and clothing for those over there like Egypt has done. As you notice, they have their cameras and posts on Fa- Facebook, I see this, uh, this as an agenda to try to take over our village. Sorry that your trustee is more concerned about kissing someone's bee and bringing troublemakers to our village board meeting, thank God for the district he had gone soon. These are just a few. We showed up to our township meeting and voted out the radical Muslims' agenda. Legal protests are not impede public travel, uh, this was actually someone who actually was, um, annoyingly peaceful, but he pretends to be, um, peaceful. But he definitely tries to instigate, but these are just some of the things that we are seeing online and. and outside. When we step out of these doors, these are some of the things that are said to us. They don't see us as their own. They don't see us as Glendale Heights residents, they don't see us Americans. They don't see us as part of this society. So please, please have discussions. I mean, we have board members who aren't even making eye contact. I understand they're making, they're keeping track of time, but this entire time I have seen this person not even make eye contact with anybody that's up here. We've pleaded, you know, we've tried everything week after week. So this says more about you than it does about us. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I need a, I need a motion to adjourn.
Um, I want to give my comments about this today's meeting. Democracy was not built in a day, it takes time. That's a good, good thing is, you people are here, we heard you, board heard you. And people some chanted that mayor did not vote, mayor opposed. I did not have vote, I did not oppose. I am mayor, I am mayor of all thirty-four thousand people, you know. And I feel proud when I went to Springfield and I were having badge, thirty-three thousand some hundred, you know. So I am here and that's the reason you, all people came here. And I expect and I hope you will be here and one day evil forces will be gone. And you are the people who will face that, fight that, you know, and send those people home. Good night.
Okay, I need a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mike. Vocal?
You need a voice.
Okay, voice vote? Aye?
Aye.
Okay, all opposed, done. Meeting's over.